Anyway, I've talked to so many of you and you guys are so gracious about what we're learning because it is a tough subject. It's not something that you get, you know, oh boom, we get it. You know, you can get, "The Lord is my shepherd, I shall want." You can get that the first time around. You know, one sermon, you got it. And but the Revelation, honestly, you have to know the entire book Genesis to Revelation. It's really true. In fact, a lot of the stuff that started in Revelation, it bookends, or excuse me, started in Genesis, bookends in Revelation. And that's, it's one of the most brilliant books ever because whoever the author was, had to know the entire Word of God, which I believe it's Jesus, because Jesus said, this is, Revelation is the revelation of Jesus, right? Right there at the very beginning, he says that. So, so what is, it is not an easy study. It's just not one we just snap our fingers and we get it the first time around. So I really do encourage you to just come, even if you feel like I'm not getting any of it. You will get some things and on top of that, you're blessed because the Bible promised you that you're blessed just by reading the Word of God, reading Revelation. So I just want to encourage you, be encouraged tonight. We're gonna have fun doing this and I actually teach this class on a fairly regular basis and it's two hours. We do from like six to eight, or eight thirty, sometimes nine. We'll cover, and that, we'll do that for eight weeks, two and a half, two hours every week. So typically, it's a much longer class, much more book. We actually read through the entire book of Revelation three times out loud in the class. So you can see why that would get, after you repeat, 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 you get a little bit more. So when Sally asked me to do this, I said, "Okay, but we're gonna have to really, we're gonna have to take some time off of this." And so I wanted to get just the nuggets going. So that's why you're getting the nuggets. And so if you have questions, boy, I love questions. I sat out here with my pastor the other day and he's actually really formulating his eschatology. And he just asked me question after question. I'm like, "I love this." Because that's like, "Oh, that's the best." So I just want you to know that. I, I don't consider, I consider we're all learners. I want to learn. I learn more every time I do this. And so I want you to know, when you ask me questions, I don't take that as an insult or anything else. I take that as a chance for us all to really dive in again to the Word of God. So I just want to encourage you, please call me, please come. You're welcome to, we'll meet here at the bookstore or something and we'll have a chat about Revelation. It's one of my favorite subjects. So if you have a dream, we'll do the dream at the same time. That's another one of my favorite subjects. Jesus is my ultimate favorite, right? Right? He's our favorite subject. All right. And that's why we love this so much because the Revelation, it's the revelation of Jesus. So my goodness, we can't do any better than that. Here was my, my notes to myself today. Get ground coffee. And then while I was out, this is what came up in my mind. Can I trust God and His plan? So I want you even to jot that down on your notes. Can I trust God and His plan? If He wrote the book of Revelation, can I trust that He's right? Can I trust that He's, it's true? Of all the things that I've learned of the book of Revelation, can I trust that God has the ultimate plan? And can I trust that His Word is right on and I can, and He's gonna take care of me? Do you feel like you're gonna get lost when this happens? Okay? These are just questions I want you to think about. My second question to myself is, do I have to control the narrative? Sometimes God does things, right? And we think, "Okay, God, I could've done that better." What were you thinking when you let me go through that? Why was that? What was your purpose in that? Right? Does anybody do that or am I the only one? Y'all do that? Okay? If we, if He created me, I can trust Him because He knows every single thing about me. And that is a huge thing that I can trust Him. John Paul Jackson, I don't know if any of you know who he was. Do you know who he was? John Paul Jackson was an amazing man of God. And one of the things, one of the stories he told was about a trip to heaven that he took. He said, "One, one day, the Lord pulled me out of my bed and I, you know, was jolted awake in heaven." And he said, "I was looking straight into God. I was looking straight into, right into God's, like, I don't really, chest. So staring at God's chest." And he said, "As I looked in," he said, "I realized that He knew every single thing about me." Then he said, "I realized that I knew, because of where I was, I knew everything about me." Said, "I knew every blood cell in my body. I knew every skin cell in my body. I knew every organ in my body. I knew how everything was working." He said, "I knew I had one kidney that was working well. I knew I had one kidney that wasn't working well." He said, "I knew my DNA strand." He said, "All of a sudden," I mean, when you go to heaven, you're brilliant. You are brilliant. And, but he said, "I knew absolutely everything." He said, "I knew every breath I was taking. I knew everything." And it was overwhelming to him. He said, "Then I realized, wait, it's not just me that He knows everything about. He knows everything about every blade of grass on the planet. He knows everything about every person on the planet. He knows everything about every animal on the planet, every bug, every fish, every bird, everything." And he said, "It was just, the just understanding that and catching that alone." He said, "I was so overwhelmed. He said, "It was almost too much for my brain to comprehend." Said, "When I came back to myself, I realized this God doesn't forget anything. He knows everything. He sees everything. He knows my thoughts before I know, I think them. And He still loves me. And He's that way with every single one in this room. And if He loves you that much, and He cares about every single detail of every single thing about you, do you think for one second he'll say, "Well, at this point in time, she's not important or he's not important?" It's impossible. Because He loves absolutely everything. He created it. We know how we love our children. God loves us so much more than that. We can't even imagine. So I want you to know how deeply, incredibly loved you are. Not just for this point in time, not even for just this point, for eternity. From eternity, from before the foundations of the earth clear all the way to eternity. That we don't understand. I don't under, I can't even comprehend eternity, can you? We are stuck in a time. We understand time. But I don't understand time not beginning and time not ending. It doesn't make sense to me. I don't get that. Someday I will, I'm sure, because we're gonna see. But I just want you to think how much you're loved and how valuable you are. And I want you to know that Jesus cares so absolutely much about you that you are not gonna be lost or broken or misplaced during any difficulty. How many of you found out how much more you were loved by God during difficulty? Things you never dreamed, right? So we, my sister and I, and honey, I forgot your name. Is it Dawn? We were talking just before class started and she was telling how, how the little signs she knows that the Lord is speaking to her. And I want to tell a story because there's so many ways that the Lord shows how much He loves each and every one of us that many times we miss those stories. We miss those, we just don't, "Ah, God doesn't, you know, God doesn't think about me like that." Or God, "You know, I'm not on the Lord's mind today." I just want to dispel that because you're on His mind every second. You can't leave His mind. You can't leave His mind, okay? You are always on His mind. So I, we started getting interested in numbers because we were learning dreams and dream interpretation and all of that. And we started paying attention to the numbers and catching, catching a number. How many of you see something like 11-11 all the time? Okay, or 12-12, or 12-12, the governmental, you know, double. I was just looking at 7:14 a little bit ago, it was 7:14. I pay attention to every number. I love this clock because sometimes it gets turned on to 24-hour and I never think of 24-hour time, military time. And then when that's on 24-hour time, it just breaks open a whole new bunch of numbers for me. But anyway, one day I was sitting at a stop sign and I look up and there's this massive number across the billboard and Max Acato had just written a book called 316, The Number of Hope. And I'm sitting there, looking at this huge billboard and I'm thinking, "Well, that's interesting. That's the time I wake up every morning to pray." "Well, that's interesting. I get that number all the time." And then I think, "Oh, that's my birthday. Oh." 316, March 16. And now I look back at that and I'm like, "Duh, stuff." But that number shows up in my day so many times. It's stunning. I will wake up one time in the night and many times it's 316. I'll look at the clock and I'll just say, "Oh." Because I have come to love that minute in the morning and in the afternoon. I love that whole minute. And I just say, "Jesus, I love you. I love you. I love you." Because that's what He's saying to me. He loves me. He loves me. He loves me. It's the same thing with you. You have numbers that the Lord is giving you or colors or other hints. You'll go, "Oh, I love that bird." My mother always, she says, "When a red bird comes in, I know Jesus is thinking about me." Or a blue, you know, she knows, she has certain birds, you know, that'll come and she's like, "Jesus is talking about me." You ever heard a little bird told me? But she's like, "I know Jesus is talking to me." So I want you to pay attention to how many times Jesus says He loves you, even today, even tonight. There was a time when I was putting out books every day. It was kind of, it's kind of a long story, but I was sending books out every day and the cost on the books was 316 every single day. So I was, I was distributing Adrian and Adam, Adrian Beal and Adam Thompson's book on the Divinity Code. And so I was learning tremendous things about dreams all the time. But at the same time, I was working for them, they're from Australia, and I was working here in the U.S. to send out their books and distribute them all over the U.S. and Canada. And while I was doing that, every time I'd go to the post office every day and I'd send out their book and it'd be $3.16. And one day I walk out of the store, out of the post office and I said, "Lord, why are you showing me that number repetitively so many times a day? What's going on?" He said, "Stephanie, you need to know and believe that I love you." It healed me right there. Boom, I was healed. Of whatever it was that I didn't trust in the Lord, okay? So what has happened in the book of Revelation is every time I go through it, the Lord heals something in me that I'm not trusting in Him. If He created me and He knows absolutely everything there is to know about me, why shouldn't I trust Him completely with every part of my life? But I don't. There's times I'll go, "Oh." "You didn't think about that, did you, Jesus?" And He's like, "Oh, yeah, I did." So, get down coffee. Can I trust Him? Can I trust His plan? Can I trust His thoughts toward me? Can I trust His leadership? Does He really have the best plan or do I need to make up my own? Think how silly that sounds. I know I can't make up my own plan for the book of Revelation. It's impossible. I have to trust that the King of the universe, the Lord of the universe, not only has the best plan, but He cares so much about me. He's like, "Steph, it's not gonna be the same without you. I'm all about you. He's the same about all of you." He wants us to be there with Him, right? And it's true of the, of all of us. It's true of the world. So while we're going through this, I want you to think not about that, "Oh, this is terrible, all of these things that the Lord is doing." What the Lord is doing that's terrible is that He's taken out the enemy who has done horrible things to you. You know what? When somebody does something to your children, you know what? You could do it to me. You go after my kids, I'm coming after, I'm gonna take you out, right? Am I right? You can do it to me, whatever you need to do, but boy, I'm gonna come after you, go after my kids. And that's, that's how Jesus feels. That's how the Lord says. He says, "They're my inheritance. I love them." And when He's looking at the, and when we look at the book of Revelation, He's, He is going after the enemy. He's not going after you. He's going after the one who has hurt you and tried to destroy you. Because He's mad. He's mad about that, right? So the most important thing, and what we were talking about, Sally and I, we talked about this. Let me use this cute little stick because I couldn't even get the laser pointer to work right. But the, so the beginning of Earth Pains is right here at the very beginning. And the first, this is where the first, this first line right here, because you all have this chart in the front of your book. This first line right here is where the pre-trip rapture is, that's where many, many scholars, many people believe that, many believers believe that's where it's gonna come. And where the, where the discussion is, is that, here's the mid-trib. This is when the abomination of desolation is set up, boom, right here. And some believe, now there's, I don't know of any strong teachers that, that teach this. But I do know strong teachers that teach this and I do know strong teachers that teach that He will come just at the last trumpet, when the seventh, when the last trumpet shall sound, the dead and craves shall rise. And there's also, the other, the other reason this is confusing is because many believe that here, the rapture will take place and then the second coming is here. Where others believe that this is not only the rapture, but it is the second coming. So there's two events, rapture, 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 second coming. Do you see what I'm saying? Pretty much everybody believes this is where the second coming is. But some believe that the second coming and the rapture is just one event, all right? So that's where it can be very confusing, all right? Now, I don't call that last one post-trib because there's still another 30 days. But it's pre-wrath. I call it pre-wrath. Because the Lord will, by then, the Lord will be here because He's gonna pour out His final wrath. He is gonna pour out His final wrath on the enemy and that's the Bowls of Wrath, which are actually poured out from the Bowls of Prayer, which is really interesting, isn't it? So, but what's the most important thing? Is the most important thing when Jesus is coming? What is it? What's the most important thing? And who, and who He is? I want you to go back in your notebook and let's read together page three. On the side, this is the one who's coming. And this is the most important thing. It is Jesus who the book of Revelation reveals. All right, together, let's just say it as loud as you can. Number one is the Alpha, the Omega, voice like a trumpet, first and the last. Son of Man, garment down to his feet, girded with a golden band, walks in the midst of the lampstands, hair white as snow, eyes like flames of fire, feet like fine brass, voice as the sound of men in waters, holds the stars, sharp two-edged sword, countenance like the sun, He who lives, He who has the keys of the kingdom. Isn't that a powerful thing? I had somebody, somebody came in and said, "Steph, I read that through." And he, they were listening to the video, I think, and they, she said, "I just shook from the top of my head because this is the Jesus that we love and His is the one who's coming." All right. I just want you guys to know that I bear a, I bear a heavy responsibility for what I teach and I, I consider it extremely important to be careful. So I will not teach you anything that I wouldn't teach my own children. And I have stood up in front of a big bunch of people and apologized and repented and said, "I, the Lord has changed my mind on this before because I believe in that. I'm responsible and I will answer to that one we love, right there, that Jesus, who is the Alpha and Omega, who does know everything. One day I will answer to Him and it's very, a very serious matter and I want to be careful. I don't take it lightly at all." I'll let you know how I believe, but I expect you to decide how you believe, okay? And that, with that way, we don't have a, we don't have a problem, do we? It's like Fox News. I'm gonna present the information, you decide, okay? All right. But let's base it on Scripture. If the Bible says, "Do not fear 366 times," He's commanding us. Jesus is saying that to us many, many times through there. "Do not fear, do not fear, do not fear," right? If that's true, if He said it 366 times, I, I want to obey that. But there's times when I have to say, "Lord, I have to understand how not to fear. You're gonna have to teach me because something in my heart is terribly afraid of this." Do you think He will teach you? Yes. In fact, if He wants to eradicate fear out of your life, He will do it, but He wants your permission. Many times we hang on to things that we are afraid of and then I've had people tell me, "Oh, I never read the book of Revelation. I'm terrified of it. I won't read it." Okay, well, how am I ever gonna trust, trust the Lord and His plan if I never know what His plan is? And what am I leaning on? What's my prop? What's the thing I'm leaning on that makes me not trust God and His plan? You see what I'm saying? What's the prop that's holding me up? And I hope you guys will ask yourself that. Because guess what? There's gonna be a time in your life, it doesn't have to be during the tribulation, goodness, not at all. There's gonna be a time in your life where everything that is propping you up and you think you're believing in God, it will come out. And you will think, "Wait, I need to go back and I need to reevaluate my heart." I was leaning on my friendship. I was leaning on my, my, my fear. I was, I was leaning on my ability to control every situation. And now I can't control every situation, so everything seems out of control. Does that make sense? When all of these props go away, all we have left at the end of the day is Jesus, which is huge, which is massive. But that's where we really want to get, is where that's the one we're trusting. I'm just trusting in Him. I'm not gonna trust in my prop anymore. I'm not gonna trust in that. "Lord, you said you are my healer. You're my deliverer. I'm gonna trust your Word. I'm gonna trust in this. This is gonna be what holds me up." How many of you stood on the Word for my rate of thanks, whatever it is? Healing for prosperity, I mean, for even for salvation out of debt or something like that? How many of you stood on the Word of God? Just one? Come on. Okay, good. Because, because this, when does this stop being true? Never. Isn't it interesting that Jesus said, "I was, I am, and I am to come?" He's always the same. He was the same yesterday, today, and forever. My Word will not pass away. Not yesterday, not today, not ever. For all eternity, it's still good. And I can bet, I can take this to my dying breath and know it's absolutely true and I can stand on it. All right. So those are the things we want to do and those are the things we want to, where we want to hang, okay? And that's where we want to land. All right. I, I want to do this now. What time am I supposed to stop, Sally? I'm sorry. It's eight? Seven fifty. Okay, thank you. Okay. Let's, let's start out on the first chronological sections. And what I want to show you are the first seals, the first seals that are opening. Who holds the, I hope you'll spend time on those pictures out there. Who holds the, the great title deed or the great scroll? Who holds it? We talked about this last week and we read it in the book of Revelation. Who is it that holds it? God the Father was holding it and there was no one worthy to open the scrolls. Remember that, where we read, "There was no one worthy," where are we? Let's see, four, the throne room of heaven. And in chapter four, and it talks about, there was absolutely no one in heaven above or down, or on the earth or below the earth, there was no one worthy to take the scroll. But then there was this lamb who looked like he had been slain from the foundation of the earth. And who is that lamb? Jesus. Okay, so Jesus takes the scroll. Now, as Jesus takes the scroll, He is worthy, He's the one who's worthy to open the scroll. He's the one who's in charge of what's gonna happen next. Can we trust Jesus and His plan? If He's the one in charge and He loves us that much, can we trust Him? Okay, keep asking yourself that because things are gonna start, start looking really out of control. But they're not because God Himself, Jesus, has the hand, the, the scroll in His hand and He's, He is the one calling the shots. All right. Chapter six in your Bible, excuse me, chapter five, the Lamb takes the scroll. Chapter six, the first seal. The first seal, I'm gonna read the first part of that. Now I saw when the Lamb was opened, one of the seals, and I heard one of the four living creatures saying with a voice like thunder, "Come and see." And I looked and behold, a white horse. He who sat on it had a bow and a crown was given to him and he went out conquering and to conquer. Now, some have said over time that this is Jesus. I don't believe this is Jesus because Jesus is not the one who is, is released at this time. Jesus is releasing. He's opening up and He's releasing these four horses. The second horse is the red horse and the second one releases bloodshed and world war. Let's look at the first chronological section. First, let me say, the seals are real. This is in your notes. They're not real or symbolic. They are future. They are progressive. They grow in intensity. They are numbered and they will unfold in a numbered or sequential or chronological order. Only when the Bowls of Prayer are full does Jesus open the first seal. When, and here's what it is from Revelation 5:8. "When He, Jesus, had taken the scroll, the elders fell down, each having a harp and golden bowls full of incense, which are the prayers of the saints." Now that's us now. When we pray, right now, we are the ones who are filling up those bowls in Revelation 5. Now the seven seals are released by Jesus, the Lamb of God. The first seal is the white horse. The antichrist political military aggression, and we just read that, speaks of the antichrist being released. He will look like he's righteous and truthful. But he will be the ultimate counterfeit of truth and righteousness. The arrowless bow speaks of his bloodless victory using deceptive diplomacy. One of the clearest examples in modern history is Adolf Hitler, who gained control of a number of nations without firing a shot. The antichrist will wear a crown as a symbol of his political authority. He will receive authority or permission to act. From whom? God. God is the only one who has the authority to give the antichrist and let the, and allow the antichrist to be released. And I, I wrote down Matthew 28:18 and I'm just gonna real quickly find that. Matthew 28:18 says, "And Jesus came and spoke to them and said, 'All authority has been given to me in heaven and on earth.'" There's another verse that talks about that as well. "God uses evil leaders." And here's the example from Scripture. He uses, He used Nebuchadnezzar. God used Nebuchadnezzar, didn't He? And Nebuchadnezzar was not a nice man. You read about what happened during that Babylonian time where, where they took Israel out. And that was not a fun or a pretty sight. It was wicked. Nebuchadnezzar was a wicked man. But God used him to take care of what Israel had fallen into idolatry and into gross sin. And God dealt with Israel with this wicked leader. Now can I say that at the same time, God was dealing, God dealt with Nebuchadnezzar too because we saw what God did to Nebuchadnezzar? He ended up out in, out in the forest, didn't he? Like a wolf. God deals with everybody, everybody, on both sides of every issue. He doesn't lack any need or, or He doesn't forget what's happening. If somebody's treated you badly, guess what? God will deal with that. God will deal with that on that other side. God will vindicate you. You don't have to go out and vindicate yourself. God will do it. And I tell you, he is the best vindicator. If you allow him to take care of it, he will do it. And it may not be until later. It may be a time that passes. But I'm telling you, I've watched this happen in my life, and I've watched it happen in others' lives, and it, it happens in the most brilliant way. And I did find out that as long as I hung on to that thing and I wanted them to suffer, I suffered. The minute I turned loose of it, my suffering was over, and then the Lord could deal with that other person. It's just like when you discipline your children. You discipline your children, and they do something. If, if, uh, my, my son hauls off and waxes sister, then I can't deal as, with your sister now, because you just punished her. I could have done much better and taken care of business. And that's how it is. It's like fighting with children, you know? It's like, if you, it's like, "Honey, will you just let me deal with the situation?" And it's the same with God. God's like, "Just let me do this. I got it." He's, he's a much better God than we are. Aren't you glad? Second seal, blood hit, blood sit, bloodshed and world war. The Antichrist will take peace from the earth, and God will allow it. First Thessalonians five three says, "For when they, the nations of the earth, say peace and safety, then sudden destruction comes upon them, as labor pains upon a pregnant woman, and they shall not escape." The Antichrist will make a peace treaty with many nations for seven years, and then he will break it. Now, one thing that we use when we are defining our scriptures, when we're defining our, um, terms in the Bible, is that we have to use Daniel to understand what the Lord is talking about in the Book of Revelation, which is really amazing, because God, um, used Daniel to write the book of Daniel in the Old Testament, thousands of years before he used John to use Revelation. And God laid down the symbols to Daniel, and John was then able to use them. And then we can figure them out today, which is shocking. It's brilliant what the Lord has done. So Daniel clearly spoke of seven weeks, and, or a week of seven years. And, and he talked about, it's so much that he talked about it as being twelve hundred and sixty days. And then there's an extra thirty days. At another place, he talked about twelve hundred and ninety days, and that includes that last thirty days. And we'll, we'll talk about those things. But Daniel, if you look on your chart, and you can read the scriptures where it talks about the twelve hundred and ninety days versus the twelve hundred and sixty days. Shocking. Jesus laid it right down to the day of when he's going to do what he's going to do. The third seal is the black horse, famine and economic crisis. The fourth seal, and I'll let you, you, uh, read those, is the pale horse, the disease and death. Um, God's judgment, let's go down a little bit in your page. God's judgment against the wicked results from God taking his restraining hand off of evil men. These four horses are all things that men do to other men and women. I, uh, men is, we're all mankind, right? And so God allows this to happen with these first four seals. He allows men and evil, men and evil plans of men to come to like the, the, the highest point in history. How many of you have been, it's seven forty-four, by the way. Good numbers. The, how many of you have ever seen, how many of you have been shocked to see the evil that men have been doing to other men or women? Doesn't matter, men or women, or the evil that women. In the last, I think in the last five years, I've been shocked into a new reality of that. I, uh, there was always a time where I would kind of talk myself out of things and think, "Oh, God, you know, they'll take, it'll be okay," or, "Oh, it's over there," or, "Oh, it's over." Listen, my friends. We are gonna have to deal with these things, and we can't put it off on another country or put it off anywhere else. We need to be the ones praying. And that's our job. Let's pray, and let's believe in the word of God. Let's believe in his plan, and let's agree with heaven. All right. So God will, God will take his restraining hand off of evil men and allow them to sin in an unrestrained way against one another. The Antichrist will act violently against the nations. The fifth, sixth, and seventh seals involve supernatural actions from heaven. The prayer movement, however, deals with us. We are gonna be re helped, we are gonna be working with the Lord to release his, allow him to release his judgment. We're gonna be crying out in a grievance. The scripture says, "They cried." The intensity of the prayer ministry in heaven at this time gives us insight into the intensity of the prayer ministry on earth. And how long is this gonna go on? That's the question. Boy, I don't know about you, but I know my mom. She used to say, "How long, Lord? How long will you continue?" And that has gone on for decades now. And now I say it. "Lord, how long will you allow this to continue? The injustice of men toward other men." It's the most recorded prayer in Scripture. And then in the sixth seal, we're gonna begin to see cosmic disturbances. Now, the sixth seal, that's on, uh, in Revelation six still. And the sixth seal is about verse twelve. "I looked, and he opened the sixth seal, and behold, there was a great earthquake, and the sun became black as sackcloth of hair, and the moon became like blood, and the stars of heaven..." Now, stars doesn't actually mean a star of heaven falling down. It can be aster, that word star is aster. So it can be any kind of flaming debris, anything flying around. But it would look like, how many of you go watch the asteroid showers? I watch them. We call them, you know, the falling stars. We watch them. We, well, I love that. I love watching them. But this is gonna look quite stunning, as it's a huge show in the heavenlies. Now, does that mean they're all gonna hit the earth? No. We think, we tend to look, look at the scripture and we think, "Oh, it's all gonna hit us." No, it's not gonna all hit us. It's just, we're gonna see a show in the heavenlies like we've never seen before, okay? And can we trust the plan? Can we trust Jesus? Okay. All right. Now, I'm gonna do this now, because I'm afraid we won't have time if I don't do it otherwise. I want to explain to you something, a bit of literary genius from heaven. And, um, in the book of Genesis, what God did in the book of Genesis was that he told us how he created the heavens and the earth. Genesis one, two, and three, right? This is how I created the heavens and the earth. Then he stops. I think it's just to chapter two. Is it one and two? He did the seven days, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven? Then he stops, and then he goes, he circles back around, and he says, "And this is what I did. I created man, male and female. I created the animals, Adam named him." And he circles back around. It's kind of like a parentheses. He's going along chronological, day one, day two, day three, day four, day five, day six, day seven. Stops. He says, "Okay, now I'm gonna tell you what all I did on those seven days." Okay? Does that make, does that make Genesis make sense? Okay? He did the same thing in the Book of Revelation. And what I'm gonna hand out, um, and could I have you just give some to each table? So what I'm gonna hand out here is kind of a key to the Book of Revelation. And a couple of weeks ago, I said, I, um, I had those small books of Revelation, if you wanted to write in your Bible, um, that you could mark where the parenthetical sections are and where the chronological sections are. Now, we just saw a chronological section, by the way, which is right here. The seven seals, it's in your chart. The seven seals are right here. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Right there. So, right here. And the reason we know that it's right at this midway point is because of these scriptures right here. "The Antichrist is unveiled as the man of sin, and he demands to be worshipped, and the abomination of desolation takes place." And there's the scriptures, Revelation, Second Thessalonians, and Matthew, and they all take place right here. And that's when Jesus takes the scroll, and he says, "Okay, I'm taking over here." This, remember, this is the tribulation, and this is the great tribulation. This is the, the labor pains. We're in the beginning of the birth pains. How many, you, and most of you women, many of you women have had babies, and you know what it's like. I had six, and I remember thinking at, at numbers, when I was gonna have number three, I was, I was, uh, like eight months pregnant with number three. And I remember thinking, "Oh, I am gonna go back into labor." And I thought, "There is no escape." When you, when you have, when you go into labor, beginning, it's a brilliant way of putting it, isn't it? The beginning of birth pains, which is where we are right now. There's wars, there's rumors of war, man, nation rising up against nation. All of these things that have been happening since Israel became a nation again. All of these things happening. But the Antichrist has not yet been revealed. And so, but the minute the Antichrist is revealed, all of a sudden, we're gonna be at the ninth month, and we're gonna be going, "Oh, guess what? Labor's gonna start here pretty soon." And what's really cool about this is we are actually birthing something. Jesus is actually looking forward, because what we are going to birth is a millennial kingdom. We're gonna birth a whole new thing. He is gonna birth this through us, a new heaven and a new earth, and he's gonna cleanse the part, the earth that we know. Isn't that amazing? What a brilliant God we have, where he takes this whole thing and he says, "Okay, I'm gonna..." Everybody understands what having a baby is, and I'm gonna use that, and I'm gonna say, "Okay, the, the labor is gonna go up." So right there, at that midway point, where the, where the abomination of desolation did take place, then he says, "That's when I'm opening the seals, and now labor's really gonna start." And that's the great tribulation. I know what it's like to go into labor, and you can, you know, you can sit around for a long time, labor. Hours. And day, and sometimes half a day or a day, right? And then all of a sudden, there's no more. Right? Then you're like, "Oh, get me to the hospital right now." That's it. I read all of Andrew Murray, I read several of Andrew Murray's, um, like almost all of Andrew Murray's book one day during, when I was going into labor with my daughter Caroline. I will never forget that, because it was a snowstorm and beautiful. Okay. Yeah. So can I trust the plan? Can I trust the plan? So this page that you have now, I just made this up for y'all, because I knew we were gonna be blasting through this really fast. So if this week, if you will look at this, and if you will, in your Bible, you will mark, and do this with sticky notes if you have to. If you don't want to write in your Bible, just do it with sticky notes, okay? Mark that this is a chronological section, the seven seals, okay? And then there's the scripture right there to mark that out. And then, after the seven seals, it's like God tells, um, um, John, "John, sit down," or the big angel, the Lord, the huge angel says, "John, sit down. Now, we're gonna talk about these seven seals and what's going on in heaven and what's going on in the earth." All right? It's like a parentheses, a parenthetical section. Sit down, let's talk, okay? And then there's the second, third, fourth, and fifth, okay? So go through and mark that in your Bible. This'll make it so much easier. When people are preaching this, you're like, "Where are we in the timeline?" Alls you have to do is go to your chart, go to your Bible, because you're gonna have it marked in your Bible, okay? All right? So this one, this is like the roadmap for the Book of Revelation. And I didn't learn this till, I don't know, ten years ago, when I really started studying this. Made it all so much easier. Okay? All right. The final thing I want to say is, let's just read that last scripture. Wait, do we have a scripture? The very last scripture? "When the Lamb broke open the seventh seal." Let's read that together in your notes. On the very last page of your, of number three. "When he, the Lamb, broke open the seventh seal." Let's just stand up and let's, let's just read this together. I don't know, sixteen? Okay, sixteen. Sixteen. Let's just stand up. "When he, the Lamb, broke open the seventh seal, there was silence for about a half an hour in heaven. Then I saw the seven angels who stand before God, and to them were given seven trumpets. And another angel came and stood over the altar. He had a golden censer, and he was given very much incense, fragrance, spices, and gums, which exhaled perfume and burned, that he might mingle it with all the prayers of all the people of God, the saints." That's us. "Upon the golden altar before the throne, and the smoke of the incense, the perfume, arose in the presence of God with the prayers of the people of God, the saints, us, and the hand, from the hand of the angel. So the angel took the censer and filled it with fire from the altar and cast it upon the earth. Then there were all the peals of thunder and loud rumblings and blasts and noises and flashes of lightning and an earthquake. Then the seven angels, who had the seven trumpets, prepared to send them." Can I just pray real quick, Sally? I'm good? Father, right now, just put your hand out. If, if you want to understand. Lord, we all need understanding in this book. We recognize this is a serious book. And we recognize that even if we're in heaven and watching this whole thing happen, even if we've been raptured, raptured out, Lord, we understand that we'll be looking down, and we will still be praying for what's going on on the earth. So it's important that we know the plan. Jesus, we ask you right now, first of all, forgive us for not wanting to know the plan or being flippant about the plan. Or being flippant about who is coming back. I repent right now. Jesus, I repent. And I want to know this book. I want to know, and I want you to reveal who you are to me. Jesus, you are the God of the universe. You have a brilliant plan. You're way smarter than the smartest person on earth. Your thoughts are way higher than my thoughts. Your ways are way better and way higher than my thoughts and my ways. And Jesus, I just ask you now to bring peace to my heart about the Book of Revelation, and show me where I'm not trusting you. Show me where I'm not trusting the plan. And Lord, I just, right now, I want to rest in you, like you commanded me to, right that first scripture we read the first night. You commanded me to be at rest about this. So Lord, show me how to be at rest. You are the best God. You are the God that loves me so deeply. Father, I worship you. Let's just put our hands up and worship Jesus for just a minute. The God of the universe, the God who opens the scroll, scrolls, who opens the seals, the God who is in control of it all. And Jesus, we just thank you, and we give you all praise and all glory. In Jesus' name, and forgive us when we don't trust you, but help us to trust you. The man in the New Testament said, um, "God, help, help." I know I believe. I forgive his name. Was it Nicodemus? I know, I know I believe, but Lord, help my unbelief. Lord, help my unbelief. Help it, help me when I don't trust you, in Jesus' name, and I thank you now. Amen.